Good evening. Good to see you all here tonight. I'd like to call this meeting the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners to order for January 21st, 2020. If you do have electronic devices, would you please silence them at this time so we can avoid that sort of disruption? This is a pretty good crowd there. I know there's some interest in some of our zoning issues, but always good to have a good turnout. In a moment, we'll stand for our invocation, Mr. Lem Hardison of the North Spray Christian Church will be delivering our invocation tonight. And if he'd remain standing after that for our pledge of allegiance, we'd appreciate it. So, Mr. Hardison.
Father God, we come here at the close of another day. We thank you for life. We thank you for the privileges that we've had to work and to serve this day. We thank you for Rockingham County. We thank you for this Board of Commissioners that have given their time and their talent to help serve, to make it a better place. And we pray, Lord, for the leading of your Spirit on every issue that should come before them tonight, that the decisions that's made are those decisions that would be best for our county now and in the future, for it's in Jesus' name that we would ask it. Amen.
And if Ms. Abby Wilder would come forward to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I might mention that Ms. Wilder is from our Teen Leadership Council, and we appreciate her being here and delivering that, and we appreciate what the council's doing and their mentor and director over there. Thank you, Commissioner Hurdle. Item four is the approval of the agenda. There is one item on the agenda. The gentleman, you've had the agenda for a week, 10 days now, and a chance to review.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda by removing item 11, number two, under number 11, number two, with removal of the rezoning request, case number REZ 2019-025.
My second. Moved in second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed by nay. Proclamation. This has to do with our school choice. It's item five on your agenda, and we're going to ask our county manager to read this proclamation in support of Rockingham County schools.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Proclaiming School Choice Week in Rockingham County, January 26th through February the 1st, 2020, where as all children in Rockingham County should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas Rockingham County recognizes the important role that effective education plays in preparing all students in Rockingham County to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Rockingham County, and whereas Rockingham County is home to multitude of excellent educational options from which parents can choose for their children, and whereas educational variety not only helps to endorse our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community, and whereas our area has many high-quality teaching professionals who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now therefore, in recognition of excellent educational opportunities available to families and citizens, the Board of Commissioners of Rockingham County proclaims January 20th through the 26th, 2020, School Choice Week in Rockingham County, this 21st day of January 2020.
Any comment or discussion? The Chair would welcome a motion to endorse this proclamation.
Second.
Moved in second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed by nay. Certainly, we can all support that. Item six on your main agenda is the consent agenda. These are non-controversial items, at least we think they are. However, if you have specific questions, please address those to the manager, or you can contact me or any of your commissioners. We'll be glad to get you in touch with any item that requires specific devens. That said, are there comments, or is there a motion concerning the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
And seconded there by Commissioner Hall. Further discussion? Hearing nothing. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed by nay. Item seven is public comment, and I'm going to ask, you said he was going to do this.
I'll do the public comment portion.
Would you please carry the process and procedures part of the public comment?
Yes, sir. The public comment period shall be for the purpose of allowing members of the public to present any matter pertaining to county business or items on the Board of Commissioners' agenda. Remarks shall be addressed directly to the Board of Commissioners and not to staff, the audience, or media. The chairperson will open the public comment period. Any speaker who wishes to speak shall approach the podium and not speak from his or her seat. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and physical address when he or she approaches the podium. Any citizen shall be allotted three minutes. Citizens will be allowed to yield their time on a specific topic by utilizing one more attendee's time. This will allow no more than six minutes. I will time the speakers and notify the chairman of their limit. The time clock will start with three minutes unless yielded time to six. You will hear a beep at one minute to alert you to wrap up your comments. If you are to yield time, or time is yielded to you, then please let the chairman know in advance. Speakers appearing before the Board of Commissioners will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, or use language of a personal nature which insults or demeans any person or which, when directed at a public official, is not related to his or her official duties. Board of Commissioners may accept written comments. In lieu of oral statements, written statements can be delivered to the county manager's office.
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Manager. And under public comments, the first person to sign up was Mary Martin. Mary, I think you've been here before.
Thanks.
I hope you brought your famous energy with you.
Good evening. My name is Mary D. Martin. I live at 702 West Idol Street, Madison, on the western end of the county. I am also the Worthy Matron for the Beauty of Madison, Order of the Eastern Star, a 2019 graduate of the Citizens Academy, and most proud of 2019 Citizen of the Year for the Town of Madison.
There you go.
I am here to ask for support for the Junior Beta Club of Western Rock Middle School and Holmes Middle School that I am mentoring. They are hosting a pet food drive that began on January 13th that will end on February 14th, and their theme is Guess Who's Coming to Dinner? So we're hoping to collect pet food throughout the county to deliver to the animal shelter. There's a flyer posted on the county webpage. There are boxes located at all the city halls, all the public libraries, at the college, and here. And you can bring any type of pet food, puppy food, cat food, bird food, food, food. So the ladies and gentlemen that I'm working with, they had things to do tonight, so they could not come and solicit your support on their own, so I told them that I would represent them on tonight. So if you are willing, and if you are concerned, and if you are wanting to support our young leaders in Rockingham County, please donate pet food. They're really excited about being able to count the thousands of pounds that they're going to collect and put that in their report, but they cannot do that without our support. So let's please not dampen their dreams, and let's please not let them think that they can go out and solicit a program and then nobody support them. So let's again, go to any of your libraries, go to your city halls. When you go to pay your water bill, take a can of pet food. Also, I would like to thank everyone that supported the law enforcement breakfast that we had on last Thursday for our Rockingham County law enforcement officers. That was just an awesome, awesome thing. And I want to personally thank our city manager for coming and showing support for those law enforcement officers that do such a great job for us. Again, my name is Mary Martin, 2019 Citizens Academy graduate, and your 2019 Citizen of the Year for the Town of Madison.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Mary Martin. Our next speaker is Diane Parnell.
I yield my time to Don Powell, please.
Then our next speaker is Don Powell. If you would re-identify yourself and tell us where you live.
My name is Don Powell. I live at 636 King Street in the city of Readsville. Gentlemen, I stand before you today with a list of emails that I obtained through a Freedom of Information request made on the email account of Ms. Tina Cardinal, the Director of the Board of Elections, and I did this for two different dates. One was December the 31st and the other January the 2nd, and I'd like to read some of this to you. It also, these contain references to another county employee that I'll just reference by some other names, and she's not involved in this. This is hello ladies, Happy New Year. This particular person has decided that she would like to have her housewarming shower here at the office. We're planning to have it floating from 1:00 to 4:00 on Friday, January 17th. I hope you all can make it. A copy of this person's wish list is attached, although I know she would appreciate anything. And attached to that email is one that says, you know, bath mats, cleaners, hand soap, shower, shampoo, towels, hangers, sheets, Amazon gift cards, food line gift cards, Lowe's Home Improvement, various things such as that through that particular email. And then on January the 2nd, there evidently was a revision to these plans because this email says that slight change of plans, the shower will be floating from 1:00 to 4:00 on Wednesday, January 15th. And in fact, that shower did occur at the Board of Elections. So there's two issues that I have with this as a taxpayer. Number one, that the county's email, official emails, being used for private service, and the other is that virtually for a three-to-four hour period on January 15th. The Board of Elections Office, instead of taking care of the business of primary election that we're in now, was in the business of having a housewarming shower. If the staff took lunch from 12:00 to 1:00, that means that it was virtually unavailable from 12:00 to 4:00, which makes it a four-hour period instead of a three-hour period. I'm not sure that any other office in the county government does this. I certainly feel that it was commendable for them to have a housewarming shower for one of their work peers, but I believe that it wouldn't have been better if they'd have had that after hours at another location or either during lunch. If they'd have taken their lunch and had that, I think that would have been perfectly acceptable. But, you know, my thinking as a taxpayer is that if we can get the business of the elections done in half a day, as we did on January 15th, then maybe we could shut that office down for half a day and just save a lot of money. Because this is the taxpayers' money, and I don't think the taxpayers of Rockingham County would appreciate very much knowing that they're paying people on the clock to have a housewarming shower in one of our county buildings. I don't think this group would do that. I know in my business, if I was to go to the job and find my guys laying down asleep, which would be basically the same thing, they're not getting anything done for me, it would be an issue. And I tell people all the time that in business, every move you make either makes money or loses money for your business. But in county government, that's not true. Every movement you make is money spent of the taxpayers, because the government does not create any income on its own, other than the fees and stuff that they generate through different departments. So I'm not sure exactly who has the authority, other than the Board of Elections, to make changes in this, but I would certainly recommend that we check into this and see if we can make some policy that would prevent this from happening in the future. And just teetotal wasting the taxpayers' money, because that's what happened on this day and this afternoon, was a teetotal waste of the taxpayers' money. So having said that, I know I have some more time left, but I won't bore you with any more of these details, but I certainly hope that you would take this to heart and use your powers as a county commissioner to check into this, because certainly it's not an efficient use of taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Just as a comment, I think there's some Board of Election members here taking note of what you had to say. That concludes the public comment section of our agenda night. There will be a slight spacing between this, but I'm going to ask our county counselor to go ahead and brief the public hearing process.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just procedures for public hearings. All those desiring to speak, one of today's public hearings shall register on the sheet located at the rear entrance of the Commissioners' Room. Sign-up sheets will be posted one hour prior to the beginning of the Commissioners' regular meeting. Speakers will have three minutes to speak, or can yield his or her time to one individual. However, one individual will have no more than six minutes to speak. The total time for the hearing, for any public hearing, will be no longer than 30 minutes. Speakers will be called in the order in which they are registered. Each person should state his or her name and address for the record prior to beginning his or her remarks. A speaker will address only the issue currently being heard. Please be mindful of what has been presented to the board, and please refrain from repetitive and/or irrelevant remarks. All speakers will be heard before any rebuttals are recognized. All comments should be addressed to the board. Appropriate polite conduct as expected. Anyone indulging in personal attacks, shouting, or other disruptive behavior will forfeit their right to speak, and if necessary, ask to leave the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor. We're going to move to item nine. Mr. Manager, are you going to speak for item nine, or is Mrs. Galloway here?
Mrs. Galloway is here.
I'm sorry, though, you were hiding behind.
I was hiding, yes. Let me get this going. I've got Tom Anish here from Elliott Davis. He was with the independent audit firm that did our audit this year, and he is going to do a presentation of this year's audit for fiscal year 2019. This challenged me earlier. Let me see if I can figure this out again. There we go.
You haven't read that, have you?
So let him do his presentation. If there are any questions, we can hold him up on the cell phone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I wanted to start off by thanking Ms. Galloway and the finance team for all the work they did to get us through the audit process. As I think you all probably know, it is a comprehensive endeavor, and we request a lot of items over the course of doing our audit work. And so again, much thanks to Ms. Galloway and our team for getting us everything we need to complete the process. Mr. Chairman, I was just going to cover a few financial highlights in the form of overview, talk about our three auditor reports, and then a few findings that we had as a result of the audit process. As far as the financial highlights, briefly, so with revenues of about $90 million, that was an increase of about $3.4 million, or 4% over the prior year, and that was also above budget by about $2.5 million, or 2.9%. And this is right now just limited to the general fund, but that, of course, is one of the most important funds in terms of the flow of sources and uses of the county's resources. Expenditures were about $80 million, a little over $80 million, and that was an increase of about $1.4 million, a 1.7% increase over the prior year, but that was below budget by $10 million, almost $11 million, and almost 12%. So the result of that, of course, the difference between your revenues and your expenditures resulted in a fund balance of $37 million, and that was an increase, so you had excess of revenues over expenditures of about $5.2 million, and that was about 16% increase over the prior year. And that did include transfers between funds of approximately $4.1 million. So kind of putting that within context of some criteria for having an adequate fund balance, and that fund balance in the general fund, that's going to be your reserves, the reserve of resources that the county has on hand. And we've got a few criteria up there. The Government Finance Officers Association, they make a lot of recommendations in terms of sound fiscal policy, and one of the things that they suggest is that your fund balance and your available fund balance, which they define as unassigned, assigned, and committed. So these are all items that are within county management's control, are within the control of y'all as the governing board. That's about $28 million for 2019 in that unrestricted fund balance, as GFOA defines it. So that's important. Their rule of thumb is to say, considering your monthly expenditures, and they basically compute that by taking your annual expenditures, in this case, $86.4 million divided by 12 months, so theoretically, you've got $7.2 million in estimated monthly expenditures. And how much fund balance do you have to cover that? And so in terms of months, you have almost four months of expenditures in your reserves or in your unrestricted fund balance. And GFOA recommends that that should, it's always different for each county. Some of our counties that are on the coast, there's probably recommendation for more than that in the event that there's a storm or a weather event. They're waiting for FEMA to get them resources, so maybe they have more like five months. But I think 3.9, as GFOA describes it, almost four months, is a good place to be on that criteria. Also, the local government commission recommends that there be a reserve of at least 8% of general fund expenditures. At 33%, you're above their recommended, so you're in a good position there as far as those adequate reserves. And then, of course, the county's own policy of requiring a reserve of 16% of fund expenditures, general fund expenditures. So in terms of fund balance, a healthy reserve, where you want to be, you always want to keep an eye on that, make sure it's not too low or too high, but a good place to be in terms of those three criteria. So a few highlights on the enterprise funds. So within the water fund, operating revenues of $523,000 increased by about 44,000, or 9.25%. Expenses of $615,000 increased by 2,000, less than 1% from the prior year. Your net position, which is your reserve position within an enterprise fund, of $10.9 million increased by about $295,000. Now, that did include $417,000 in transfers, I think mostly from the general fund. So in terms of cash, cash of $4 million decreased by about $2.1 million over the prior year, and that was driven mostly by $130,000 to fund ongoing operations, $416,000 coming in as transfers, about $2.3 million used in the construction of capital assets, which a lot of times we'll see, you have to make investments in your water and sewer infrastructure, and about $357,000 used to pay debt service. In the sewer fund, operating revenues of, excuse me, $596,000 increased by about $89,000, or 18% over the prior year. Expenses of $702,000 increased by about $46,000, or 7% over the last year. That left a net position of about a $5.7 million increase, and that increased by about $321,000. But again, that was assisted primarily by transfers in, about $465,000. The effect on cash, it was a $657,000 cash position that increased by $177,000 over the prior year, driven mostly, again, by operations, $135,000 cash required for operations. We mentioned that $465,000 from transfers, $385,000 to pay loans, pay down debt service, and then $38,000 used in developing infrastructure or capital assets. And then finally, on the landfill fund, operating revenues of $4.4 million increased by about $285,000, or 7% over the last year. Expenses, on the other hand, of $4.8 million, decreased by about $886,000, or 16%. That left a net position of almost $17 million, and this was a decrease by about $528,000, and that included $458 in transfers out, $458,000. So the effect on cash, $19.3 million in cash position, that was a decrease of about $820,000 from the prior year, and due mostly to that $458,000 transfer out, $723,000 used in the closure and post-closure costs that any county is going to incur in maintaining their landfill operation, and then about $1.6 million in required construction of infrastructure to the landfill. So that covers the financial highlights. Just want to go real quick through our auditor's reports. So our responsibility is to express an opinion on the county's financial statement, so really to give an opinion on all that information that I just summarized, and that's just a very small part of what's included in your comprehensive annual financial report. So what you've engaged us to do is to look at that information and be able to give our opinion as to whether it's materially correct in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Why is that important? Well, for anybody who picks up the financial report for the county, which is a lot of folks, a lot of users, they want to be able to look at that and say, all right, I'm getting a third-party opinion that these financial statements can be relied on and that they're materially accurate. So we're not performing a fraud audit. We're not making any kind of statement as to the financial condition of the county. We're just saying these are accurate statements based on our audit procedures. So management's responsibility is to prepare the financial statements in accordance with those generally accepted accounting principles, and those are the same principles that any county in the United States would use, or any local government for that matter, would use to prepare their financials. And also to maintain good internal controls over the preparation and presentation of the financial statements. So there's a lot of internal controls that go on every day within your finance department, and those are, it can be anything from as simple as a monthly bank reconciliation to the approval process for disbursements, but there are checks and balances within your finance and accounting system, and we look at those in the course of doing our audit. If we see weaknesses in certain areas, that means we have to concentrate more of our audit work in those areas, because they pose more of a risk that there could be a material misstatement or an error in the financial statements. So the good news is, based on our audit work, we expressed an unmodified opinion on the financials. That would be the equivalent of a clean opinion in terms of us looking at them and saying they are fairly presented in accordance with GAAP or with those generally accepted accounting principles. So that's the auditor's report on the financial statements. We are also required, because y'all are a governmental entity, like any other governmental entity, you're subject to government auditing standards, so we, I mentioned those internal controls. This layer of requirements has us focus on those internal controls for the purpose of that risk assessment, to say, where are controls strong, where are they not as strong, and then we shape our audit process based on that evaluation of the internal controls. So we also look at compliance with grants, with regulations, both state and federal, and we want to make sure that there isn't material noncompliance that would result in a financial statement effect. So as an example, if there was a violation of DEER or EPA standards that required, that resulted in a large fine or penalty, that could result in an accrual of a liability in the financial statements. So we always want to look at those potential noncompliance situations, and that's part of the requirements under government auditing standards. So as we go through and perform that process, we're also required to report to you if we see any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls. That's not uncommon. We see that. I would tell you that based on the local governments, counties that we work with, it's rare that we don't have some form of finding, and we know that you expect that of us as we're going through and doing the audit process. If we notice things, that can be helpful to prevent a more serious issue, that we report that and call it to your attention. So we've got a few of those that I'll touch on. I would just say that there were no findings that we would consider to be red flags, but we want to get those in front of management for action so that they don't become an issue down the road. they don't become an issue down the road. And then finally, as a separate audit step, we look at your compliance with your grant programs. So Rockingham County, like most counties, just about every county in North Carolina, in every, any major county across the country, makes use of federal and state funds, and that's a good thing. It helps you to fund the services and the initiatives of county government. But those grants come with a lot of strings attached in terms of compliance requirements, and you want to make sure that you stay within those compliance requirements so that it doesn't result in an incident where you have to return funds. So in that case, we're responsible, again, to express an opinion as to whether we felt like the county materially complied with those compliance requirements. Management's responsibility is to comply with those instances and with those requirements, and also to have good internal controls to help ensure that those compliance requirements are met. So again, good news is that we expressed an unmodified opinion on the county's compliance. So we felt like materially, in terms of those grant, state and local, state and federal grant requirements, you met those. We had a few findings, just to point out some things, particularly in terms of the DSS level programs. Most of our counties have findings with the DSS level programs. The state has some pretty high bars for sticking with those. Those are required, those are necessary. We did have a few findings on those, and again, just to get those in front of you so that they can be addressed and monitored. So on our financial statement findings, had three of those. Again, none of these are what I would consider uncommon. Again, just precautionary to keep those in front of you. So budget overage. The LGC is going to, if they see a budget overage in your financial statements, no matter how big or small, no matter what the reason, they're always going to expect that we have a finding related to that. Now, with this particular budget overage, it had to do with your incurred but not reported as it relates to your health care claims. So it is an estimate. It's an estimate that can be a little bit volatile. It's an estimate that anytime you've got something that is based on, these are basically claims that are out there, but the county doesn't know about them yet, so you're really estimating based on prior history and also in concert with your administrator to say, all right, how much do we need to budget for that? So from talking with Ms. Galloway and with the finance team, my understanding is, is that going forward, there'll be more conservative or a higher budget placed on those, on that particular item, and that will, I think that will sufficiently reduce the probability that you would be over budget on those items. But again, anytime you have that kind of overage, we're always required to report that as a finding in the county's report. Segregation of duties, this is where we want to make sure that, and oftentimes, if you've got, you know, if you're wanting to be efficient in a particular department, in this case, in the utilities department, you know, you may not have all the FTEs that you need to have perfect segregation of duties. And what segregation of duties is, is basically, I, as an employee, don't want to be in position where I have too much control over cash or revenue or a particular instance. Now, sometimes that can't be avoided, and everything is subject to cost benefit, but you want to look to see where you can minimize segregation of duties, where, for example, I may collect cash and then also have access, excuse me, access to the general ledger where I record that revenue. So you don't want, you don't want any one individual to have too much control over any given transaction. So we just wanted to call that to your attention. Another thing that we're very sensitive to these days and always want to call out is anything that's IT-related or that poses any kind of automation or cyber risk. So anytime we notice user access, we always want user access, particularly if it's something sensitive like your general ledger, to have proper controls over that. So again, I can't, as an individual employee, I can't have access to areas where I've got too much control. So that user access is very important, and we also wanted to just put that out there. My understanding is that your IT team is looking at that. And with all of these, I think one thing that's very important for us is that your finance team reacts very quickly, usually before we get out of the field, as to what they're going to do for preventive measures to take action for any one of our findings. That's what we want to see. I think we get more concerned if we don't have that, and that certainly is not the case with y'all's management team. So we appreciate that. I mentioned the federal award findings. All of y'all's awards are, or I'm sorry, all of your findings are limited to the DSS programs. I say that because, again, that's not uncommon. I would say just about all the counties that we work with usually are going to have Medicaid eligibility issues, TANF. These are programs that are typical, that we see findings. And the, I think the main remedy there is always being vigilant and always putting forth best efforts to minimize those and to have as few findings as possible. But again, ones that we're required to put in front of you and let you know about. And Mr. Chairman, that concludes my summary. I know a lot of information that I threw out there, but would certainly be able to take any questions that commissioners would have.
Well, thank you for this document. It helps put me to sleep at night.
Yes, sir.
If you'd go to page 67, paragraph 3, line 2.
Yes.
Never mind.
Right. I know that part by heart.
Gentlemen, do you have questions?
Yes, sir. So you reviewed our policies and procedures as far as what management is doing and paying bills and reviewing what comes in. Is there anything that you haven't shared at this point with management or that you've shared with management that hasn't been adopted?
No, sir. I think everything that we felt like, from an audit standpoint, was significant, we've discussed with management and have included in our report.
Okay. Thank you. Gentlemen, any other questions? We certainly appreciate your efforts. This is not an approval process, but I think thanks are in order to you and your organization. And my conversations with Mrs. Galloway and our county manager indicate that your efforts were helpful to the county, and we appreciate such a clean report from the staff that provided it and you checking on it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate that.
Mr. Hall.
I do want to point out, I was looking at the, on page 181, where you're talking about the context of, you don't have to refer to it, I'll just say it quickly. A couple of these issues that you pointed out, you found one case, and you were sampling over 5,300 cases. I think you sampled over 93, and you found one. So we're still talking about a pretty low incidence, even though it's nonconformant, it was pretty low.
Right. And that, yes, sir, and that really, I think that points out the very high bar that the state requirements impose as far as what we're required to report. And real quickly, a lot of the information, particularly in those DSS findings, the state auditor compiles those from every county in the state, and they use that as survey information to gauge where the, where they feel like the highest concentration of issues are, as far as the type of issues. And I think they shape their audit plan by that. So all that to say that they're going to want to know pretty much everything, including what you just pointed out, where you may have had, you know, an isolated incident or one incident per a very large sample.
Yeah, so I guess one of my points is that out of these 5,300 transactions, three dings, you're dealing with one transaction on all three of these dings. So in my opinion, that's a glowing report. I think it speaks a lot to the county staff. Thank you, county manager. Pat, Felissa, thank you guys.
Well, I know that this board of commissioners here and the county as a whole is very sensitive to that, so we appreciate any suggestions, even if it's too far, if you would. We want to make sure that we take care of the taxpayers' money.
Yes, sir.
That's all I got, if you gentlemen agree. We appreciate it, Mr. Davis. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner.
Item 10, Ms. Chitara Williams. She's going to talk to us about Project Impact, is that correct?
Project Pride.
Yeah.
She is over Project Impact, but that's a different county.
Okay.
She's not here today. My name is Jessica Schneider with Telmon Corporation, Project Pride.
And I'm Crystal Petit.
And we're just basically going to go over what Telmon Project Pride is. Pride is personal responsibility in daily endeavors. It's a self-sufficiency grant program for Rockingham, Caswell, and Person County residents. Most of what we do is we pay for people to go back to school for certifications that are less than six months. Right now, the biggest one is CDL. We're paying for truck drivers, we pay the whole tuition. We're also doing CNA, pretty much any short-term certifications that are less than six months.
Okay. Thank you, Crystal.
You have something to add?
Well, no, we also do, where we send people out in the workforce to do something like a work experience program, to get them prepared to get in the work field, whether they've been out, single parents, different things like that, if you've been out of the job for a full while. So we pay for that as well. We'll provide transportation, gas cars if they need it. We also help with housing and different things like that.
Thank you. And if we have a citizen that wants to take advantage of this, who should they contact?
They can contact us out at NC Works, the unemployment office. They can call the main number and just ask for a Telmon, and they can get either one of us or one of our other coworkers.
And I assume you're in contact with our economic development team here in the county?
Not 100% sure.
If you check with the county manager, we're going to hook you up.
That works.
And I think what you're talking about should be of interest. Gentlemen, you have questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair. In reviewing the documents that were submitted, when we start talking about the board of directors for the organization, and it's my understanding that the information you provided, Caswell County receives about $52,000, Person County about $75,000, and yet Rockingham's about $187,000. And my question is this, when I look down at your board of directors, it looks like there's quite a few representatives from Rockingham County that are positions that are vacant. I see nobody under the public elected officials. I see only one person on the private organization, and that person is no longer affiliated with that, with that organization. And up there representing, representation of the poor, we have somebody from Goodwill, but yet another vacancy. So out of the six positions, I think only one is in good standing on the board from Rockingham County, yet there's about $187,000 that's being allocated to this county. So my question is, how do we get somebody on that board?
You're more than welcome to volunteer. You can just contact Chitara and let her know.
Are we notified when we have a vacancy on the board?
I think they do. We have a board meeting coming up on the 30th, and I know we do have some new people that's coming in. We haven't met them yet, but we will at the board meeting on the 30th.
Well, I know, Mr. Chair, we had this same, or similar question come up last year when we was reviewing this, and I don't know that we've made the strides in getting folks involved in this board to, for the allocation of this money that we should. And I guess maybe the manager or maybe one of his staff can reach out to the representatives and see if we can't fill these vacancies. We've got a whole lot of programs that this money is funding, and there's nobody in the county to hold accountable for, to ensure that it's being spent where it's needed. Not saying that your other board members from the other two counties aren't working diligently, but we need somebody representing Rockingham County that can help identify where our needs are. And there is a lot of vacancies.
Yeah, I certainly agree with Commissioner Pertle on that, and I think it would be beneficial to the county as well as you if we had more constant collaboration in comparison of notes, if you would. So our county manager is a good source for that, and our commissioner's clerk is also a good contact. She keeps a log of open volunteer positions.
We actually have a list, Mr. Chair, excuse me, of committees that we have folks that sign up, want to serve all the time. And I think maybe if we add this to that list, but I'm sorry.
No, I agree. And Ms. Martin, we may have some way for you to expend some more of your energy.
We'll feed you. We will feed you.
They're not bringing crap food. No, I'm not giving crap food. That's food.
We'll have some at the board meeting.
Well, we'll appoint her to the board, and she'll bring another box for.
Another location.
But we have some new people, we just, I know, I'm thinking they have about maybe two or three, but we'll find out for definite, sure, on the 30th. And also, you can contact Chitara because she can really give you the more information on that part.
I'll be in touch with Chitara.
Yeah. Can we lean on you a little bit right here and just ask you to scrub your list, if you would, and report back to us?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you. We appreciate it. That's good public information, too, particularly if folks would like to get a CDL. Item 11, Mrs. Spencer, Director of our Community Development. O before P.
Let's see. There's me just a minute while I bring up my slideshow.
I think we're at item 11, subparagraph 1.
Of course, this, item number two has been removed from the agenda, so this has not been updated since that happened. First rezoning case before you, 2019-23, is a request to rezone a two-acre property from residential agricultural to neighborhood commercial conditional district. It's about two acres. The applicant is Terramore Development. This slide shows the relative positioning of this acre of the parcel in the county. This slide shows where this parcel is located in regard to our land use plan and our land class designation. This, in a nutshell, this land class is described to support anticipated increase in residential development. And support for increased residential development also includes neighborhood-serving, non-residential development, just to sort of clarify that point. Lands where residential development is grouped in existing neighborhoods and crossroad community settlements, and where it will occur in similar neighborhoods and settlements during the following 20-year period, lands with limited commercial development with an emphasis on mixed use. The property is located at the intersection of Glencoe Church Road and Highway 158, close to the southern border of the county. Make sure I'm not missing any details from your staff report. The adjacent neighborhood is primarily residential agricultural with a school, and agricultural with a school across the street, some residential protected nearby, and a trailer, travel trailer park within about a third of a mile of a mile to the south of this proposed site. Close-up of an aerial view of the site, I guess the most significant piece of this picture is probably its relationship to the school across the street, and the size of the parcel is related to the very compact development style of the applicant for this property. This parcel will be served by public water. I apologize for a typo earlier in the staff report, which I believe some citizens saw that the property would have an individual well. That's not true. There's a water line on 158 through there, and any development there would hook onto that line. There was a There was a zoning request about a year ago that was withdrawn. The applicant has come back with a more detailed application and some changes in response to the public input from before. Staff feels like, and again, in a nutshell, that the location of a non-residential neighborhood-serving, very limited in use business such as this is a natural progression of an area that is very heavily and continuing to be heavily developed with residential development, especially in a case where your land use plan does call for mix of uses in nearby uses that will mix with residential development. There are notes in your report. I don't know how many of those you want me to call out. In the discussion and presentation, I focused on the fact that this is a conditional request, conditions specified by the applicant. The fact that Highway 158 is a pretty, and due to be even more major transportation corridor, east-west corridor for the county. I gave you some statistics there. The property will be subject to site design and landscaping standards. The section of the UDO called Site Design and Landscaping Standards for Non-Residential Development will be applied at the time that this property, should the property be rezoned, the owner-applicant would then come to us with a request for a site plan approval. And at the time of the site plan approval, those standards would be reviewed and ensured to be followed. Your technical review committee will be reviewing any kind of site plan that's proposed for specific development. You have a strategy to strengthen commercial opportunities and retail opportunities in the county. You have a strategy to promote growth around targeted growth areas, which does include this area of the county. You also have a strategy to develop and refine detailed design guidelines and standards, which you have done in adopting the standards in your Unified Development Ordinance. The planning board did recommend to 3-1 to approve the rezoning requests before you. Are there questions of me at this time?
Questions prior to opening the public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Spencer. I'm sure we'll have some shortly.
I didn't, let me, I'm sorry. I want to point out that a conceptual offer from Dollar General as a potential occupant for this property. This is, at this point, a part of their conditions?
Do you know what changes they made from the proposal a year ago to get to this point?
I think it best for the applicant to answer that question, but the architecture is a very big change that I do know they made. Is that?
Question. Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing. The public hearing is now open on rezoning case REZ 2019-023. I would remind you of what our county attorney told you. And in counting the number of speakers, I've got five, four, and eight against. We're going to do, I'm going to do my best to be fair as I can on public comment here. I know there's some emotion involved, and we appreciate that. But if you could particularly adhere to not repeating things, that should take care of it. The first speaker is Mr. Scott Seance?
Sees.
Sees. Mr. Sees, thank you for being here. Nice to make your acquaintance earlier. You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you for having us. I didn't know the rules that we had to go in the exact order, so I was the first one here and signed first, so that's how I got up on first. I really wanted to go after somebody else, but that's okay.
Well, the leadoff batter is normally a very valuable man on the team here.
Now I know.
And this is for everybody. If you could, give us your name and restate your address as you come forward.
Yes, sir. My name is Scott Sees. I live at 111 Hash Lane in Broodwood Estates. I actually live right across from where this rezoning is being proposed. I wanted to speak just briefly about the spot zoning. Spot zoning, it's frowned upon in all your documents, not do it, but it basically lets one landowner dictate what he wants to do with his land, and then it puts the rest of us on the defense. We don't want this. We don't want that to happen. One thing that my wife and I did, we ended up kind of, I hate to say the leaders of this thing, we kind of ended up taking some ownership of it. We had a lot of company, we had a lot of community meetings, neighborhood meetings, and it was real hard to get a lot of people together. So, one of the things that we wanted to do was, we were told to do, and not, well, not told to do, but recommended, to do a petition. So, we did a petition in 2018. I think the county lawyer said we can't bring that here on this particular case. That's inadmissible. But the key point on that was, one of the things to do a petition, we didn't go around knock on doors. We put up a tent in my yard on the side of Glencoe Church Loop Road, put up a sign that said, "Stop rezoning." Signed petition here. Wife sat out there for six weeks in the evenings and all the weekends, and I did, too. And we manned the station. We had a lot, it was all drive-by people that wanted to stop. And the first thing they wanted to do is it gave us the opportunity to talk to people. People wanted to know what was going on, and they wanted to voice their opinion to us by signing this petition. We also had people that are for this. They do want some shopping down in this part of the county, and we listened to them, too. They didn't sign the petition, but they did stop and talk. It was a great opportunity to get some feedback. We had over 200 signatures. And there was two key things that most of the people that stopped by and talked to us about. One was, a lot of those people were the parents of the students that go to this charter school right across the street. That's not, that's not the time.
You've got 60 seconds. Stay with us, Ian.
Okay. A lot of those people, some of the concerns were safety, traffic safety, and the fact that we had a store across the street that's going to bring a lot of other people into the neighborhood. Those were the parents from Greensboro National, Winsome Forest. It wasn't just right there in my neighborhood. It was from this whole community down there. The other thing was choices. We have Dollar Generals all over the place here, as you know. We didn't want a Dollar General. We want a shopping center down there. If you saw that map that they put up where it showed where the commercial areas are, we're in the big white spot. I would challenge the planning board to stop being in react mode all the time. Every time a spot zoning thing comes up, request comes up, induce some proactive planning.
I've got you right here. I got you. Thank you. Carry on for another three minutes. We're actually 2:50 seconds.
I challenge to put a shopping center down here. I don't want two-acre, I don't want two-acre Dollar General, a country store. We want choices. We'd like to see a shopping center down in this area. Take your blinders off. Don't look just at the neighborhoods along 158. I would look at from the communities of Midway all the way east to the county line, Price Mill Road. Look from the southern border and look up toward Bethany. Look up along Highway 65. There are a ton of people out there that live in the middle of nowhere. They don't have no place to shop either. I'd say be proactive. Challenge your board. Do a feasibility study. Talk to some other developers, and let's plant a shopping center down there. I can tell you right now, the bottom line on this is money. I got a $20 bill in my pocket. $16 of that $20 bill goes to Guilford County. Doesn't go in Rockingham County. Because I got to go to the shopping areas up here, which is Reedsville and Madison. It's much closer to go right down on the southern border along 150. 150, they have some model, the intersections down there, Lake Brand, 150, nice, all kinds of shopping right there, restaurants. If you look over to Church Street, 150, same thing. You've got a Lowe's Food Shopping Center. You've got restaurants. You've got gas stations. You've got everything you need. None of it's mixed in with residential properties. Rockingham County should be doing the same thing. What we would ask for, this should be a center for people to shop, socialize, put some restaurants there, grocery shop. Give us some other choices other than a Dollar General. If you put something like that up here in your county, you're going to attract builders. Guilford County is building houses as fast as they can. They always have been. They're about filled up down there. It's coming this way. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate you coming out, and we thank you, ma'am, for clarifying that for us. Mr. Bert Bennett.
My name is Bert Bennett. Gloria Carroll has signed up to speak, but she relinquishes her time to me. I'm a, I have a residence in North Memorial Beach, South Carolina. I have a home at 313 Bennett Farm Road, Rockingham County. I spend in excess of 60% of my time in Rockingham County. I represent us four landowners who own this property. This property has been in our family since 1935. My uncle and aunt farmed this property for 60 years. The last one passed away in 1995, which we inherited. Since that time, we've managed this property for over 25 years. We're tired of it. We'd like to sell it. Originally, the tract was 49 acres. We had hoped somebody would come in from community and buy the whole 49 acres and refurbish the houses which were built in the 20s. That didn't happen. Since it didn't happen, we ended up selling 32 acres to the Bethany Community Charter School. A neighbor come to us and wanted two acres on the back to be a buffer zone for his daughter. We ended up selling two acres on the back, okay? Now, approximately two years ago, Terramore Development approached us about a Dollar General. Terramore offered a fair market value. They agreed to take community considerations, community requests into consideration. Thus, we have an upgraded exterior store, which is up there. Trees and shrubs to reduce visibility, lighting that would not disturb the community. We met with the staff at the community school, the charter school. We also hosted with Terramore a community meeting for input. We decided to sign a purchase contract with Terramore. I know there is some opposition to this rezoning, but I'd like to point out a couple of things, about three things really. Rockingham County is encouraging development in the county, particularly in the southwest. The county and state has spent several million dollars to run a water line down 158 over the US 220, I-73. A sewer line is in the process of being extended in southwest Rockingham County for growth along US 220-73. 220 has been forelanded all the way into Greensboro, to Rockingham County. Interstate I-73 is open from I-40 into Rockingham County. There's a housing development in the planning stages on Highway 65 for another 150 homes. This is four miles from the property we're asking to be rezoned. These are all good things for the county. They're bringing more people in, industry, and jobs in the county. In the last, number two, the last 20 years, there's been 12 housing developments built within two miles of the property we're asking to be rezoned. These developments have added hundreds of homes and families to the area. It's been good for the county, and more development is coming this way from Greensboro, simply because of Interstate 73 being three miles away. Three, what usually follows housing development, increased population density? The answer is retail development stores. It's ironic that I remember two general stores within a mile of this property, Whitty Store and Wilson Store. They're gone. But what replaces stores like that in this era? Stores like Dollar General, Family Dollar, Dollar Tree, Walmart, Neighborhood Markets. This is the era we live in. This is progress and change. People move in, and retail establishes to come and serve those developments. In closing, keep in mind, there's 163 acres for sale just to the east of Hash Lane Development. Price tag is $1,460,000. I don't think a farmer's going to buy that to farm. In my opinion, it would be a housing development, okay? Now, there is another 18 acres right behind the development on Hash Lane. That's for sale. Most likely housing. We have a 12 acres on the east side of Hash Lane. I am in the process of talking to two developers right now. We're talking about 12 to 15 houses. The area is growing. I encourage the county commissioners to approve this owner request and allow us to move forward with the sale of this property. Thank you for your time. If there's any questions?
Not at this point, but we appreciate your comment. And just as a reminder, when you get that first horn there, you've got 60 seconds, so please carry on.
Okay, I'm finished.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. We're going to go on to Mr. Dave Taylor.
Thank you very much. My name's Dave Taylor. I'm 191 Benton Willow Way. As a part of the Winsome Forest subdivision. So, just wanted to take a few minutes and give a sort of a fore of this rezoning, just as my experience is probably not very unique to those of us in the southwest corridor of Rockingham County. Most work in Greensboro, Winston. We have about a 30 to 45-minute or a little longer commute every day. I think that most of us would also agree, less trips into town on nights and weekends for this sort of, these sort of things would be a blessing. For my neighborhood, it's approximately 15 minutes to the Food Line or the Lowe's, and 15 minutes to Walmart, whether you pick Greensboro or Reedsville to shop. So, it is a 30 to 40-minute round trip every time you want to get something that could be provided by a Dollar General, which is literally two to four miles from Winsome or Greensboro National or any of these other developments that we've been talking about. Don't get me wrong. I love the rural, peaceful living of Bethany Community. It's why we brought, my wife and I bought our first home, and why we've raised a family since 1997. And the rest of my family's been here for almost 30 years, so we understand the rural setting. I just don't understand how a Dollar General in the community degrades rural living or upsets the community at all. If anything, allows for more time and dollars to stay in Bethany, boosting the local economy. I think we've mentioned that already, but I think it's important. I've seen other communities where a Dollar General has prospered, Brown Summit and other places, and I think it's, it would be good for our community. The upside of a Dollar General where there's no convenient alternative just makes sense to me. I think the economy and convenience of shortened trips and more time at home on nights and weekends versus some notion of degrading our rural neighborhood just seems to make a, this doesn't seem to make a plausible argument against each other. And our community, especially the southwest Highway 158 corridor in question, has grown more than just about any other part of Rockingham County as far as housing. And we just, we simply need the infrastructure to support that. And we need, and this is, in my mind, a logical first step. We'd love to see shopping centers and other growth, but this is a logical first step. So, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Mr. Dave Taylor.
I'm Trent D. Day.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Trent Taylor, thank you for being here.
I'll just make it, thank you, first of all. I'm Trent Taylor, 375 Norman Farm Road, about a mile from where the proposed Dollar General is going to be. And I'm disabled. I stay at home all the time. My wife works, and I can drive. But it takes me, it's 9.4 miles to get to Food Line from where I live. And that's about a 20-mile, 18-mile round trip to go get, you know, just basic household goods. a 20 mile, 18 mile round trip to go get, you know, just basic household goods. So, it would really help the older people in the community and people disabled like me to have a Dollar General there where they could run up to the store if they needed something. And that's really all I've got to say. I have nothing about the, where it should be there, shouldn't be there, whatever. Where y'all putting it, I think, is really good. It's in the middle of a fork, there are no houses in front of it, there's no houses beside it, there's no houses behind it, disoccupied. There's two houses behind it, but I believe the owner owns them houses, and they're not occupied right now. It's a perfect place for it to be, in my opinion. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Trent Taylor. Having a little trouble. Daniel Almazan?
Perfect.
Record that, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Council members. My name is Daniel Almazan. I live at 306 Oakbrook Drive in Salisbury, North Carolina. I do site acquisition for Terramore Development. They have been in the business of doing Dollar General stores for 16 years. They've developed over 450 stores in North Carolina, Georgia, and Florida. And so, as a preferred developer in North Carolina, we pride ourselves in, in helping them identify sites. This is one that they realized that there was a good-sized community, good traffic, and an opportunity to serve a need. One of the things that's important about Dollar General and their placements is, is that their, their core clientele is usually within two to three minutes, or two, two to three miles within the store. They don't attract, it's, it's not a destination from a long distance. They really thrive on existing traffic counts, and so, our impact on traffic is typically minimal. In fact, most of the times, we, we never trigger a TIA, and so, I'd say overall, it's about a 1% to 2% increase in traffic, just where that somebody might do a quick trip in order to get something convenient. I know, I think one of the questions was, what, what did we change? Because we had been before, the planning board before, and, and we withdrew that application. Gave us a chance to kind of hear some of the comments and actually do some revisions to our site plan. I've got copies that have more detail than I think was provided here, but, but just to give you a real summary. See? One of the things that, that we did that was significant was we changed the facade. In most of the stores that you see, we have a commercial-looking facade where there's a low roof pitch. In this one, it's more of a higher roof pitch, a little bit more detail, so it's more consistent with the rural setting. And we had a pylon sign that was originally submitted for, and we changed that to a monument sign, so again, to lessen the impact in the area. We worked with DOT to make sure that the entrance to the drive only came out through Highway 158 for truck access. There is a, there is an access off of Glencoe Church Loop, but it's not, it's too small for a truck, you know, for a tractor-trailer to access, to ensure that all that traffic is kept up on 158. We also had a lighting plan, which is included in your, in your packet, to ensure that we don't have any bleed over of light off that site. And finally, after the conversation with Ms. Spencer, we'd also like to propose channel lettering instead of the box lettering that, that we've got on that. So, thank you for your time, and if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming to Rockingham County today. Brandon Allen.
Before I get started, I've got a, got a little outline I'd like to give you guys. I'm going to go over a lot of information, and I only got...
Where do you live?
Just a couple of minutes to give it to you. My wife is going to defer her time as well, so I'll get that, if you don't mind.
I assume she's also named Allen?
Yep, she is.
Where you live?
I live at 171 Hash Lane, Summerfield, North Carolina, 27358, about a half a mile from this location. All right, so what I'm going to do is I want to go over these strategies that the planning staff has recommended versus the land use plan, and I'm just going to go from the top. So, number one, the growth management strategy stated in the land use plan. Strategy one, the planning department quotes, "By setting a high standard for development, growth is likely to occur at a place, a pace that will outstrip the infrastructure and resources of the county." Well, in my opinion, that was taken out of context. The quoted sentence, it was, if you read the whole paragraph, this is clearly talking about residential growth, not commercial growth. Strategy four, planning department appears to be using 158 widening to justify this request, you know, to zone that property commercial. Well, future 158 widening shouldn't be considered just because NC DOT does not have a widening of 158 in Rockingham County in its TIP, the Transportation Improvement Program, nor does it have a TIP number, which in turn means there is no funding for this project. No funding, so that means it's at least 10 to 15 years out. So, that is, that can't be considered, in my opinion, for rezoning. Strategy five, planning department quotes, "Strategy five is a reason for rezoning." I don't want to read it because I don't have a heck of a lot of time to go through it, but basically, I'm going to read just a couple of quotes out of it, and you can take it for what you want to. So, in it, it says, "A more compact, well-organized fashion than is currently the case for zoning." So, that means, hey, let's stay away from spot zoning. That's what that's saying. This, in the opinion, is spot zoning. Says promote a positive community appearance. Well, having a big yellow Dollar General sign in front of our community is not a positive appearance. A safe and logical flow of traffic. NC DOT states that if this exit is put in front of the school exit, more than likely, a logical traffic pattern would be that it is a right-in, right-out due to the school exit. This would cause all traffic wanting to go west out of the site to go east on 158, take a right on Hudson, right on Glencoe Church Loop, which would significantly increase traffic in this neighborhood. Road wasn't designed to handle that, wasn't designed to handle any of the trucks that do that. Matter of fact, 158 was built to take the traffic off of Glencoe Church Loop. That's why it goes straight down the hill. Glencoe Church Loop was there before the 158 was. Trucks couldn't enter the site, the way the developer states, if there is a right-in, right-out only. Trucks would have to use Glencoe Church, Hudson Road to make deliveries to the site. Again, increasing traffic, decreasing safety for the many members of our community that use, walk, and run on these two neighborhood roads daily. There's nothing safe about the blind spot on 158 over the hill. All of these items do not coincide with strategy five of the land use plan. Strategy six, this argument references housing and businesses near US 220 and I-73 through the county. This argument's not valid because the stated location is, it's several miles away, and it's in Guilford County. Strategy seven, planning department states this strategy is a reason for rezoning requests, but when read carefully, it identifies reasons to limit the growth of this type of retailer in Rockingham County. I've got, I won't read it just for time, but basically what it says is, "If we build quality growth, we'll attract quality," I guess residential quality, other quality commercial stuff. Dollar General does not represent a quality-built environment, does not promote a positive community appearance, therefore, this will discourage quality growth as outlined in the land use plan. Moving forward to growth management policies, Section 522, transportation. Planning department states, "The intensity and size of the proposed requests do not represent high-traffic generating uses. The intensity and size of the proposed requests may not generate more traffic, but they do represent increased traffic congestion between two existing roadways. It also causes safety concerns with the blind spot on the hill of 158." This is inconsistent with Section 522 of the land use plan, and it says to state, protect safety and usefulness of the area thoroughfires. Section 52228, land use plan, collaborate with local NC DOT officials for long-range planning efforts and improve project coordination. NC DOT has not been included in this, in this plan. Commercial development, planning 525, planning staff notes Dollar General is a neighborhood center and intersection. 5252 of the growth management policies, encourage commercial development to incur in clusters and shopping centers to minimize proliferation of retail strip locations. Again, we're talking about spot zoning. This is the only type of commercial property around this intersection. There was no planning for this, it's only reaction to the rezoning for re-quit. Section 527, residential development, staff notes a reduction in vehicle trip lengths. This is a weak argument to rezone a piece of property. There are seven Dollar Generals within a 10-mile radius, one is five miles away. Section 5.2 dot 11, community appearance, recognize significance of major roadway entrances into the county as a measure of community image and quality through landscape, signage, and other visual improvements. First thing I want to see when I drive in Rockingham County on 158 is a big yellow Dollar General sign. Couple of other points I'd like to make, let's go back to the widening of 158. Logically, if you look at that, it would make sense to widen 158 to the south. This typically doubles the footprint, which would go through Dollar General parking lot. State would have to buy a parcel at a significantly increased rate, costing taxpayers more money. In closing, our community understands there will be growth. We just want quality growth in accordance with the land use plan that we have in place. We want to be included in the planning for that growth. Everything that I've talked about tonight has been taken directly out of the land use plan. Given these noted inconsistencies with the plan, I don't see how the board can rezon the property question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Very well organized.
Thank you.
Mr. Mike Fox.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. My name is Mike Fox. I'm an attorney here tonight representing Terramore and the applicant. My address is 100 North Green Street, Greensboro, North Carolina. I want to point out just some high-level things. This project has community support. You heard that even from the folks who, who may not be here to support it. It has staff support, and it had planning board support. This is a good development. What was changed since last year, I want to address that, is we heard that, that they don't want a big, a big development there. They want, that if it's going to fit, it needs to be a neighborhood-serving development. And that's really what Dollar General is. And what we did was we came back and asked, instead of just a standard commercial highway business-type thing, we asked for neighborhood-serving zoning. And we've put conditions on there to make it neighborhood-serving zoning. We've limited the uses there, basically to retail sales and food, convenience, food stores, no gas. We've put, we've eliminated a lot of other options that people could conceivably do in that zoning. We've got facade options here. I don't know if any of you have ever seen the Dollar General down in Guilford County that looks more like a country store, fits in nicely with the community there. We've got that option here. We've got lighting restrictions and a tree buffer, all to make it more compatible with the neighborhood in that area. It's been said several times, I want to repeat it, Dollar General is not a big outside traffic generator. It is not a destination. People don't drive 30 miles to go to a Dollar General. Typically, people use a Dollar General when they just need to run out and get something, and those people typically live very close, or maybe it's on your way home. I grew up in rural Watauga County. My parents still live on the farm that I grew up on, and there used to be four or five country stores within about two miles of my home. There's probably one now, but there is a Dollar General very close, and they use that. I've used it when I've been up there to visit it. I want to point out quickly the, the benefits to this community in terms of revenue. It'll add approximately $1.4 million to the tax base. That's, it's income that will come in every year from, from paying the property taxes. $1.2 million in annual sales, you know, that's money spent in this community. Eight to 10 full and part-time jobs for employees. Those are people that will be employed in this community. This is, this is a good development. There aren't, there aren't going to be, you know, people coming from 20 miles to go to this Dollar General. This will be used by the people in the neighborhood. It won't generate extra traffic, and there's no truck access except from 158. So, we want to make sure that we were clear on that. All truck, you know, delivery trucks and everything will have to come in on that 158 entrance. Nothing will go through the neighborhood. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have now or later.
Later.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Ms. Dura Jeffers. Fairly longtime resident of Bethany.
Really wasn't planning on doing this. Dura Jeffers, 1231 Hudson Road, Summerfield, North Carolina. The attorney spoke on how good this was and how they changed it so much. I think the square footage is the same, and they were never going to sell gas. They were going to sell everything. From 2018, they're going to sell the same thing they proposed then. They pulled the request in 2018 because the planning board denied it. They denied it. And this, they have reduced it from about three acres down to two acres, but we're still going to have the same building. We got a little pitch roof. I think that's the only thing. Gas was never an issue before. Pardon me, like I said, I wasn't going to do this. The purpose of zoning, as defined by the Institute of Government, is to protect the property rights against negative spinoffs of neighbors' land use. Make land use patterns predictable. Don't just pop up anything. Establish economic development areas for job growth. This is, tobacco farmers will make more money than people working at the Dollar General, won't have to work nearly as long hours. And protect the neighborhood against negative environmental, protect against negative environmental impacts. This will materially alter the neighborhood and will not have a positive impact. It is a very dangerous intersection, Highway 158 and Hudson Road. There, I've told you all some, there's a turn lane going east and west. If you're in the turn lane, you're apt to meet someone coming right in front of you in a head-on collision. Conditional districts are developed when there is insufficient standards to mitigate the site-specific impact on surrounding areas. It's just a way to get around the rules. It's requested to lessen adverse effects upon the surrounding areas. Like I said, it was not approved in 2018 by the planning board, and the planning board this last month, there were five members, three voted for it, one had grave concerns, and one did not vote. I don't know why the one did not vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jeffers.
Yes.
Appreciate it. Good to see you. Ms. Judy Webb.
My name is Judy Webb. My address is 14312 US Highway 158, about a quarter of a mile east of this proposed Dollar General. And I, I just prefer to keep our area a rural agriculture area, and I'm totally against having a Dollar General. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Judy. Take it. Mr. Webb, you're, you're up.
Yes, my name is Woody Webb, and I live at 14312 US Highway 158, which is a quarter of a mile, like my wife said, right east, and also own property just yards from this proposed site. In other words, my property is behind the school, and the proposed site of the Dollar General is just in front of the school, just across the road, where their driveways will meet. And I'm retired. I'm there every day, I'm in and out. I live down the road. My farm is just up on Hudson Loop. So, I'm going from there, back to my house, back and forth, and I see this tremendous amount of traffic. I've seen, heard several accidents. I've seen, heard several accidents. I don't know what the outcome of the accidents were. Ambulance is coming to the scene. There's been a person killed up at Knight Road. That was approximately a year ago, the traffic. And the Dollar General, I do not like spot zoning. It's just, it's not attractive. I don't care what you put in there. It's a big safety issue, and it just doesn't, it's been, I've lived there all my life. I'm 72 years old, and it's always been rural. It's a good community, and I like to keep it. It's low-paced, and I'd just like to keep it that way. So, any questions?
Not at this point, but thank you, Mr. Webb. Sandra Klingman.
I was wanting to get my time to Candace.
Okay. That was pretty clever, Candace. I heard you did that.
Actually, it was a plan. One thing I'd like to say, I'm Candace Sees. I'm at 111 Hash Lane, Somerville, North Carolina. And I would have directed a question to the developers and the lawyer that just mentioned something. He talked about revenue coming from the Dollar General, and he said $1.6 million revenue for the county and $1.4 million in the tax dollars that's associated with it. That land is going to be valued at probably, what, $60,000 or so? So you're only going to get a few dollars from that. If you go on to what the taxes would be for my property, $23,000 a year to bake a property, et cetera, for personal property taxes, this would be business property. And you'd get 2.25% in excise taxes, et cetera. And I can go on about that. It's not going to be a significant amount that you'd get from this Dollar General. I also looked up and threw the statistics for Dollar General. I wasn't going to talk about it, but I will. I looked at Dollar General, and of the 17 stores that I looked at that were audited in 2018 for a price gouging, Dollar General was historically the one that, of the seven, I'm sorry, of the 27 ones, 27 stores that was audited, 17 of them were Dollar Generals. Dollar Generals were always the ones that were doing price gouging, anywhere from 17% down to 6%. And a lot of these stores were reevaluated. Your most recent store, the most worst store, do you know which one that was? Rockingham County, Highway 87. They paid fines last year in 2018, well, the year before, $7,640 in fines. OSHA fines. They blocked the doors. Have you been into the Dollar General? We talked about Dollar Generals on Highway 220. They mentioned that, nice stores. There are some, but there are some nasty stores. That store on 220, if I bought the pictures tonight, I would show you. They block aisles. They're just horrible. And also, he mentioned that there would be no entranceway on Glencoe Church Loop. There will be an entranceway on Glencoe. These trucks will be coming in here off of Hudson Road and Glencoe. If there's an in-and-out, going in and out, they're going to have to enter through Glencoe Church Loop if they're going, I'm sorry, if they're going west. So they'll have to enter through Glencoe Church Loop. It's hard to explain. In and out, I'm not sure if you understand what that is. If you go, if you're going east, you have to turn in the east way. When you go out of the Dollar General, you have to turn, I'm sorry, if you're going east, you have to still turn east to go out. That's an in-and-out. Or if you're going west to go in, there's no west entrance for an in-and-out store. So that's what you call a transportation feasibility study about being directly across from a school. So thank you for your time. Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Further comments?
Oh, wait, you're looking at the bottom and on the other side.
Mr. Dixon. I'm sorry.
That's my bad, too. Don't start my time. I'm not going to repeat anything if anybody says, and somebody. I want you to, there's two yellow tabs off the top. I call it, the two yellow tabs are there a year ahead of these others. I would like, all my time starts for you to put the area photo back up and get this.
Yeah, and before you start there, there's another Dixon. Are you sharing time or separate times?
I'm going to yield my time. My name is Drexel Dixon. I live at 1079 Hudson Road, and I have lived there for 64 years. In October, rode my bicycle on Hudson Road when it was gravelled. Bought my first calf from the Knights that are, Lewis and Dennis Knight, walked it across that field. There's a plaque on that school. We hadn't talked about the school at all. Nobody's mentioned the school. There's a plaque on that school over there that represents the people that put it over there. They're honored that they put it over there. I was brought home from the hospital and lived on Branson Road. I've lived my entire 64 years within sight of this deal, and I've invested a lot of money in the community. I'm going to read this. So I know the land. I'm a farmer. I know what you got up there, and we're missing the boat. As y'all look at that rendering up there, I want to say this. This landowner sitting here has the right to do what they would like to do. They own the land. They sacrificed for the land. Their family has. It is an ideal spot for a Dollar General. You couldn't find a better location as far as traffic and putting it in a spot that everybody could see it. I'm going to skip past all the points that everybody has. I don't want to repeat any thing. This triangle, I want y'all to look at this. You're seeing the purple outline? I think it's important that y'all know that that entire triangle, and I'm responsible for the outside of that, that entire triangle right there is, has one way of water out. There's no underdrain. Staff has never mentioned it. There's absolutely no underdrains under Hudson Road right here. There's no underdrains under Hudson Road right here. There is a drain right here. Pay particular attention to this pond. There's an underdrain here that the water flows away from it. There's no water that can leave that triangle. There's no water that can leave that triangle. Did I say there's no water that can leave that triangle without going under that roadbed? I was in contact with the developer of the school. I talked, I'm just going to keep reading because I'm going to watch my time. We've got to be real clear here tonight. The staff has an obligation, I think, to report proper information for y'all to vote on. Y'all need to know what you're looking at. If you discount rights and ways and everything for this unsurveyed triangle, y'all agreeing to offer a permit, I hope, or looking at a permit, to offer a right to put a building on something that's plus or minus acres, and when you discount, we may run into trouble. I would challenge you to get this thing surveyed before you do this. The client has a right to sell it, and I support that right with everything that's in me for them to get rid of that land. But there's an obligation from the staff, there's an obligation from the county commissioners, to look at what the rights have to be. I have the right to shoot a high-powered rifle anytime I want to, but I have an obligation to make sure where that ends. Again, there's no way water can get out of that. I don't think staff has addressed that. The pictures you're looking at is that school across the road. That is the only place that water can go. Omega Construction had, Bright Enterprises did the engineering to it. I have talked with them. They told me, but I don't know who I was talking, I mean, I know who I was talking to, but he said, no one has called him with his own and the planning people. So the water can't go anywhere. I own the property at Whitty's Crossroads that y'all see all the gravel blocked up because I'm tired of picking up hypodermic needles. They're there. Syringes are there almost every weekend. Cigarette butts out the wazoo. I planted watermelons. See the picture of the watermelons? I planted watermelons right here in a dry year. Y'all saw that treble-later watermelon? I did this because I love the neighbors that were all breaking up over. I love the real estate. It was so fun the following spring. Watermelon seeds don't float as fast as cantaloupe seeds. Right there was watermelon patch. You see it up here. You see this rip raft that's putting this pond out? Bright Construction, the people that did the site plan down there, said that they allowed these retaining ponds for runoff because they had to eliminate the pond that I fished in, by the way. You had to eliminate the pond because they couldn't put runoff water in it. Do y'all not know every bit of this runoff water is going in there? So there'll be more cigarette butts washed into there. It's going straight in that pond you see down there. So if we're talking about our students, that plaque that's on the wall that represents that, I got to watch my time here. This is tearing me up, y'all. I think that, again, you have an obligation to the community. The school was closed last year, two days because of septic problems. Those pictures are the water that is standing around that school, and we're fixing to put two more acres of water. And there's none, for me, from that purple line up to that road. By the time y'all realize the problem we have, you'll say, well, you can't put any more develop over there. It's flooding over on the pond. So there used to be this old joke about, I mean, I've heard it saying a gazillion times, there's walking trails around there, and I've heard the saying, you know, the initial, when you're up to your, you know, what, in alligators, the initial response might have been to drain swamp. I think it's an ideal place for that store, but we're not looking at this right. We're jeopardizing. We've talked about schools all night. We're jeopardizing our students over there. And so I think if y'all can wrap your head around that nice plaque over there, unless each person that approves this is willing to put a plaque out there for these kids to walk around this pond, it's going to be a cesspool with hypodermic needles, and it's going to be there. I own a parking lot in Reesville, too. I think a lot of people close them up. I'm not saying it shouldn't be there, but you better do a little bit more research because the revenue it's going to generate will not justify the cost it's going to fix. We got a $10 million school over there. It's already got problems, and we're adding to it. That runoff is not to be going in a clear-streamed pond. So site is perfect, you got a problem. I mean, a serious problem. Unless you want your name on a plaque for everybody to see forever that you're responsible for what's going to happen to that water down there that's on that school, I'd agree. I think this long and hard, I'd do a little bit more research before I did it.
You good? Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Close the hearing. Beautiful questions. We've got a recess for about five minutes. I'm sure you got a little. I'm looking at 8:14. I'm going to declare recess for actually six minutes till 8:20. Been at this while. Let's take a six-minute break. We'll reconvene at 8:20. Reconvene, our meeting tonight, the present issue has to do with the zoning case in 158 that we just had public comment. And I'm looking out to see, I believe I did catch everyone eventually there. Mr. Dixon, thank you very much. I'm sorry about over your looking. But I now declare the public hearing closed. And, Mr. Commissioners, it's now to you to inquire for further information as you might so desire.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hall.
Thank you. This is for Ms. Spencer. One of the issues brought up tonight during the public hearing was about the water runoff. Can you address that situation and how that would be handled?
Surely. For one, this property is located within a watershed, so it's subject to built-up-area restrictions. The site will have to be engineered when it's designed. The topography and where that water's going will be part of that process. At this time, there is no site design in front of you. That comes after the rezoning request. And because I do plan to take this project to the technical review committee, we have the, all the regulatory authorities to include those that will look at water runoff and the engineer, whoever designs the project will be there also, and we can have that discussion.
So if I may, it sounds like you're telling me there would be several more hoops or several more steps.
Absolutely.
To give an approval for a building design, a site layout, and watershed.
That's correct.
And other issues.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair. Okay, that was my concern, too. I was very alarmed by the photos that I saw that were shared tonight by Mr. Drexel. I'm sorry, I said, Mr. Drexel. By Drexel Dixon. And it was alarming because of what the photographs depict the school now. And I do have some concerns, but I think you've mitigated those somewhat by saying that through the technical review process, those will be addressed. And I hope they are addressed better than they were when it was technically reviewed for the school.
I sure would love to see those photographs. I hope I have an opportunity to.
If you don't mind if I share them, I will, absolutely.
Yeah.
One more minute, and she shatters the picture.
Well, and I'm looking at those pictures from the report of issues across the street as well as how this might impact it. So certainly, I will look at that.
Yes.
Yeah.
I got a question for Mr. Bennett. Has anyone approached you with other sorts of opportunities on this land? Just I'm curious. Sir?
Did you say me? You called me.
Yes, I did. I was just curious if anybody else that approached you for opportunities on this particular parcel, the bit that's in the triangle up there.
On this triangle, no.
I'm pretty impressed with those watermelons off this property. Yes, sir.
The developers are, I've got a question. On the plans that you submitted to us.
Yes, sir.
It mentions another proposed well location. We're hooking directly up.
That was originally before, I think that carried over from previous to whenever the water line was coming through. So obviously, we're not going to have a well there. We're going to connect to the county service.
Okay. What's your thoughts on the complaints about trucks coming down Glencoe Loop?
Yeah, great question. We worked with Caleb Tilly, who's the traffic engineer for Rockingham County, and submitted the site plan to him for review. That is a full access there on 158. And so what we provided to you is actually, shows you a green line that shows the truck maneuver in and out. And so they can either go east or west whenever they leave the site. There's no need for them to go on Glencoe Church Loop. And likewise, the width of the drive aisle that goes out to Glencoe Church Loop is too narrow for a tractor-trailer to maneuver. Yeah.
Now, I don't know if most people know this, but once we, if we approve this, then it goes to North Carolina DOT.
Correct.
And DOT actually comes out and looks at your plans, your drawings, and then does a traffic study, and they make a determination whether it needs to be a turn-in lane, caution light, stoplight, or whatever at that area, right?
That's correct. And their only recommendation at the time that we submitted was that we just align the drive aisle with the school's entrance. So we didn't have any anticipated road improvements from that point. But we still have to go, like, submit to DOT for a driveway permit. So ultimately, they will decide if there's any other improvements necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I've got one question for you.
Yes, sir.
I think I heard earlier that that would be a truck-only entrance and exit on 158, or?
No, it just means that it's a wider throat so that they can maneuver in and out.
Okay.
Has, not technically deaner anymore, but is deaner or their successor, have they talked to you about this drainage issue?
Yeah, we use Breck, who's out of Hickory, to do our soil engineer, and they actually did the site design on this. They've already gone out and done soil testing, and we've had perk tests done by the county. He's already factored in and has a water retention plan. That also would be an application that has to go through DEQ. And of course, we still have to meet with staff for their approval. So, I mean, like, there's quite a bit of regulation that has to go in order to ensure that we retain any runoff on our site. So, I mean, like, a lot of the concerns, I can understand from pictures that you've seen, but we've had worse sites that we've made work. I don't know if there's maybe a. I don't know if there's maybe a specific question or other concerns there.
Ultimately, it's gonna be Deaner's call on this thing.
Yes.
Deaner and the Soil Conservation folks. Other questions, gentlemen?
Thank you for your time.
Staff, have you finished? Yes.
I wanted to point out that DEQ representatives and Soil and Water Conservation are on TRC now. You did a, we did a revised bylaws and roster, I believe, in the summer. Any rate, that, those representatives are on the board. And I don't, I don't know that the school actually went through a formal TRC process because the way our ordinance is written, the TRC meets for major subdivisions. However, this site plan has to go through those approval authorities, so the TRC will represent them around one table. And I really, I'm not sure about the school, but I'll look at it if it went through that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hall.
In looking at this, and there was a picture provided of some fencing, and there has been a couple of references to using trees and shrubbery and such as that, but on the backside, on the Glencoe Church Loop area, will that area be, have some kind of fencing or barriers or whatever?
Yeah, there's landscaping visual barriers around all sides, and whether landscaping can be replaced by fence with approval of staff, but all sides of the site will have to have barriers, visual barriers in the form of landscaping or fencing.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I'm a decision maker, who's responsible for those? Is it the developer or is it the captain?
Shall I entertain the? The developer is responsible for installing and maintaining all of the landscaping on the site, and it has to be installed on the site that they own, so that it's, so that they accept responsibility for it.
Thank you, Carrie.
Appreciate it.
I'm done, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Reed.
And Carrie, this is probably for you, so welcome back up. I was out there, I've made a couple of trips out to that location. Commissioner Hall and I went out the other day and drove around the area and actually sit and watched school dismiss there in the afternoon, and just monitored what the traffic was, because any time we have any type of issue like this with rezoning, I like to visit the site and see. But one of my concerns was on the Glencoe Church Road where it meets 158. I would hope that regardless of the outcome of this, that maybe DOT would consider, that's a tough intersection to look back at, and I would hope that DOT would consider maybe addressing that intersection so that it's more of a 90-degree than a 45-degree. You know, one of my concerns is if they do the landscaping, and it's my understanding that the landscaping that's proposed with this conditional offer is probably the most stringent landscaping that can be tied to a zoning case or a conditional rezoning, that they look at a 90-degree versus approximately a 45-degree there and squaring it up, and hopefully the property owner would be willing to work with them on that, because it would probably mean addressing some of the property there to get the right-of-way chain.
So I'm happy to bring that in front of NC DOT, and speaking of that highway widening design, that's the sort of design change that would likely be included in that highway project, which, DOT has seen this site, by the way, has seen the project, and although the design isn't finished yet, they've still, they have done some initial design work for the highway, so the site will be developed in conjunction with whatever information that we can have about the widening.
Yeah, I might mention that-
To include signage far enough off of the road to anticipate future right-of-way.
Yeah, I might mention that DOT does consider altering the road, there'll be another public hearing for folks to participate in. Further questions? Now, I'm gonna stick my neck out a little bit and say, we're not gonna make everybody happy with what we decide here, with whatever we say. I know it's an emotional issue for many, and it's a property rights issue, and whether you own the property or not, you care about it if it's close to you, and you care about the county. So I certainly appreciate that, and I want to thank everybody that came and spoke. I want to thank folks for the emails, even the ones that threatened not to vote for It's good to have some input on that, and a lot of times, even though I think all the commissioners go out on these zoning cases, I know I do-
I wouldn't.
-it's hard to fully appreciate unless you've lived around there or have some feel for what's going on. And I gotta tell you, in listening to some of you, I had to scratch my head a little bit to decide if you were for or against, as you described the situation. Nevertheless, gentlemen, are there any further comments or questions? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to approve or disapprove this item 11, sub-paragraph 1, for case REZ 2019-023.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve, 2019-023.
We have a motion on the floor to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second. Motion and second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed by nay. The ayes have it. This request is technically approved, awaiting the rest of the contingencies and conditions as mentioned. Item number two under 11 has been dropped from the agenda, item three. You're up again, Ms. Spencer.
I'll take a minute to get my slides in order, if there's those that want to leave the room.
May I request a moment, a chapter two?
This case is a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, which the Planning Board did recommend unanimously to approve. This was a case that we, the Planning Board heard earlier in, earlier in the month, and has moved right to you, so the read-ahead packet that you got did not yet have a decision, and sort of waiting your opinion about whether you would want to entertain that type of faster track in the future or not. That said, the current sign regulations in, it is very common of Unified Development ordinances, for there to be sign regulations in the residential district that are limiting for residential districts. There are a few uses that are permitted by right, however, in the residential district, including schools and churches, whose needs typically require a larger sign than would otherwise be permitted in the residential district. I've seen cases where properties are made to rezone to an institutional district in order to line up with the sign ordinance. I feel that that's a clunky option, and that I would rather address this for now and for future issues. I've got, in crafting this text amendment, I included several definitions for you about animated signs, in order to really nail down what an animated sign is, to give you the opportunity to disallow animated live-jumping figures on a sign, but to allow electronic changeable copy on a sign, excuse me. And the definitions are maybe, maybe overkill when we revise the UDO, we can simplify them, but in this case, I think I wanted for us to be covered and exercise caution. So that said, my suggestion is to add, add the text, "External illumination must be directed downward," instead of prohibiting signs from being lit in residential district, "And signs shall not be animated or flashing in nature." So currently, the sign ordinance does not allow any lighting on signs in the residential district. And as you know, oftentimes, development entrances want lighted signs, so it's not an unusual, not unusual ask. The other part of this, which have, I've gotten some mixed results or mixed feedback about, where ballfields in, for schools, school fundraisers typically sell banners to line the fences along ballfields for schools. It's a very, very good method of raising funds for a school, it's been a really great, I know many schools have had great success with that. Given the proximity of the fence to the road, and in other cases, it was my suggestion to not allow signs to be directed just to the road, but to be, not intended for road view, but intended for internal view on the site. So that part C, off-premise advertising oriented to the road, prohibited. The other main change is to increase the maximum area of a sign on the wall of a school or a church. From 25 feet to 50 square feet.
Now, you're talking about in a residential area, right?
That's right, residential district.
It says signs permitted in all districts.
There are, number two, sign regulations applicable to residential districts. Where are you looking?
Per paragraph B, I think.
Yeah, unless specifically permitted-
Unless, oh, 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 excuse me.
... permitted in all districts, all-
Excuse me, yes. That is, unless permitted in the section called "Signs permitted in all districts," these are the rules for residential. An example of signs of these, this exception, is directional signs from the road into a site. That's a sign that's permitted in all districts, and it's a separate part of the ordinance, so I'm not suggesting changing that part of the ordinance.
Other questions? You have a point, Mr. Berger?
Yeah, I don't necessarily have questions, just in C, where you're talking about off-premises advertising oriented to the road. I think, similar to what they do at Wentworth Elementary School, where they actually have the advertising facing the road. So I would just ask that we amend that part of it, and just allow for schools or churches to be accepted from that one prohibition.
So what we would, what we would, and the Wentworth school is in the residential district-
Yes, that is as an RA-
So it is similar, yeah, okay. Yeah, we would probably just strike that phrase-
Well, I think it'd still be applicable, you could probably just put it in parentheses, except schools and churches next to it on that part, and leave the rest of it the same, if that's okay with our attorney.
I think that will, I think that will work, Mr. Berger.
The commissioners understand what he's talking about?
Okay.
If you ride by Wentworth School in March, you'll see exactly what I'm talking about.
We just, we, if you don't mind us discussing a little bit further, the Gilbert case about signs, not being able to regulate content of signs, I want to make sure that that won't inadvertently get us in trouble for regulating content. I'm just exercising a-
Regulating content is-
No, I know, but it's a very, it's a very complicated case. It was before the legislature in recent years about regulating signs for what it is.
We're talking about the physical sign, we're not talking about what's put on it, that's gonna be the responsibility of the authors, so to speak.
Yeah, or the school or the church.
Whether, so whether it's advertising or not advertising.
Right.
Further questions, gentlemen?
Well, with her having this concern, do we need to let them look at this and bring it back to us at a later time?
No, I'm, I can go ahead, go ahead and do it. You good?
Yeah, and I think, I think we can-
Just asking a question.
No, I think I'm good with it.
Yeah.
Y'all good, I'm making a motion to approve if we need to go ahead and do it.
Okay, all right. Motion by Mr. Travis.
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Berger. Further discussion?
With the-
Yeah, with this modification.
With his applications.
Thank you.
The parenthetical phrase, to be included.
Yes, yes.
Just to be sure, you don't have any question about what and where on the parenthetical phrase?
Well, it's up to Jennifer whether she has a question about that, 'cause the record of the minutes will show what changes in the text.
We'll make sure she did. We got part copy right here.
She used a video evidence.
Motion's been made and seconded, further discussion of a pertinent basis. Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed by nay. Ms. Spencer, you may sit down. Kathy Murray, Services Program Manager for the Rockingham County.
Kathy's changed a little bit.
She don't look the same much.
She done changed a little bit.
Good evening, gentlemen. Felice Farrell, Health and Human Services. Ms. Murray cannot be here tonight, so I agree to present for her. So I will keep this brief.
Thank you, thank you very much.
No problem. So you've received the Rockingham County Child Protection Team and a report from January 1st, 2019 to December 31st. This is a report that is mandated, and was mandated in 1991 under Executive Order 142. Basically, it kind of gives you an overview of what the protection team has been doing over the last 12 months. We meet quarterly and review child welfare services, we look at child fatalities and other concerns for our community. We identify gaps, review cases of child death, advocate for change. We try to help increase public awareness of child welfare issues, inform the commissioners of the actions that we need, and we try to get the community be involved, 'cause this is a community issue. Some of the issues that we are seeing in our community that are impacting our children and our families include mental health, needs, substance use issues, domestic violence, and of course, economic stability. One of the things that we've been focusing on as a department and as a community is improving our trauma-informed services, so we're bringing in more counselors who are getting training in trauma-focused CBT, EMDR, and then we're also gonna be a pilot with Cardinal and a few other counties to try to help bring in more wraparound services for our children in foster care. So that is my brief review. You also have a copy of the report, are there any questions?
Questions, gentlemen? Yes. Hearing none. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Ms. Farrell?
No problem.
Ronnie Tate, Director of Engineering and Public Utilities.
Well, before he gets started, I know I had a number of things I went through on the water policy that was presented. We've got a session on Friday that the agenda I saw seems to have a good bit of free time before 10 o'clock, and I just asked that we table this, everything under Ronnie's until Friday morning.
Yeah, we know how slow a talker he is, so I agree with that.
He smiled when you said that.
Yeah, I moved the table this until Friday morning at our recess meeting.
Further discussion?
I'll just slow talk on Friday, then.
You went part of the discussion. Move it second, further discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Look forward to seeing you Friday morning, sir.
I want biscuits.
Felice, are you back up?
You have a budget revision in your packet to repurpose and- You have a budget revision in your packet to repurpose and utilize some maintenance of effort funds that are specifically for behavioral health-type services, and we are looking at trying to do an opioid response safety coordinator, a contract with Jeff Pruitt for the next six months, and hopefully 18 months. And basically, what this position is going to do, it's part-time, it's contract, and it's going to be looking at trying to work with our community partners, whether it's the hospitals, or doctors, or dentists, emergency services personnel, our sheriff's department, our local law enforcement, and also working with some of our community providers that are providing valuable services, and working to create community awareness with anti-stigmat programs, PSAs, building capacity in our community, because we have a pretty significant opioid and substance use issue in our community right now. Training family members using Narcan, and also helping them get valuable resources and supports, and other education and training for our community partners and providers. Mr. Pruitt was working for CCNC of North Carolina, with the changes that are happening in Health and Human Services, particularly Medicaid transformation, that position was gradually phased out. Our community value, basically had a good response with some of the work that he was doing, and I feel that we probably need to continue that work here, particularly what we have going on. So the proposal is to take some funds that have already been approved, we've reallocated those funds to a different line item, so that we can focus on this initiative.
Questions or points? Mr. Travis.
I agree about the opioid problem, but this couldn't have been done during the budget process, it just came up.
So we have funding in for a different component, we're not utilizing of those funds, so we're trying to refocus a little bit and put it more into that, into that, more of that PSA education, getting out there and working with our community providers.
So as of June 2020, what's gonna happen?
We're gonna try to continue that into the next year. When we do that maintenance of effort funds, and we're looking at those priorities, we're gonna be looking at that to continue, and, and our county manager's kind of giving me a priority list that I'll be working on.
So you are gonna have this included in our next budget process?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Pearl, you're kind of our anti-drug man.
Well, I appreciate Commissioner Travis's comments, because I know there's probably no one more critical of adding a position in the middle of the year than, than me. However, this is, I appreciate what you're doing with this effort. Obviously, these are monies that we have already allocated in this year's budget, we're just gonna reallocate those funds to fill a position that is much needed, because if y'all know Mr. Pruitt, he was one of the, probably one of the main persons responsible for the, the distribution of Narcan throughout this county, drug drop boxes in all the police departments, and, and he's, his position was eliminated, and he's been very beneficial to Rockingham County, so 100% support your effort here, Felissa.
Yeah, Commissioner Pearl, I had no problem with the position, I, well, it's creating another position, so where's the funds gonna come in, come January, June, it's gonna be another position, right?
It, it's a contract.
Yeah, contract position.
So it's a contract.
Either way you go, it's still creating another position before the budget process.
But it will be reallocating, excuse me, I'm-
Yeah, I don't know, I know what you mean, I just, y'all jumped on Lance about doing something like that.
That's right, that's right.
So I'm just trying to be fair across the board.
Oh, I, I don't disagree with you, but these funds are gonna be allocated to our maintenance of effort that we have to do with Cardinal, so these monies are going towards our maintenance of effort.
Right, I got you.
We're just gonna choose how we allocate them, and, and it's, like I said, this is a contract. But thank you, it's a great question.
Yeah, thank you, Felissa.
No problem.
Well, I, personal opinion on everything that we do up at this size, we need to look at cost versus return, and I've got very high confidence in Mr. Pruitt, and if we can do anything to diminish the opioid problem, I think we've slipped down to number three worst in the state of North Carolina, as far as opioid consumption, is that right?
We are, we are making some headway. I did review the numbers today with NC pre-injury, and we are starting to take that little turn very slightly.
Well, that discussion over?
Oh, yeah.
Would accept a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Moved in second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Best county manager, new business?
Yes, sir, new business.
Thank God.
Excellent response.
Thank you.
Commissioner comments, starting with Mr. Travis.
No comment.
Mr. Pearl.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I would like to thank everyone for being here tonight. I know we had an issue on the agenda that was, that there was a lot of passion on both sides about, on the zoning case, and it seems like those zoning cases always bring out a, a, a great crowd. I wish we had the same turnout when we didn't have a zoning case on the agenda. However, I can just share with you, and I, I think you spoke on this, Commissioner, Chairman Richardson, I received phone calls, I received emails, I had personal contact with friends that were on both sides of the issue, and I had contact with individuals who, who was gonna not vote for me if I voted yes, or was not gonna vote for me if I voted no. So, but at the end of the day, I think we're all trying to do what's right for all of Rockingham County, and I understand that you're not gonna make everyone happy, and I can, I just share with you that the optics we have to look at from our, we look at from what we think's best for Rockingham County, and we're always gonna, we're always gonna do what we think's the right thing to do, and it's just important to me to represent those that vote against me and those that vote for me. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Pearl. Commissioner Berger?
Well, the resolution tonight having to do with school choice, it's, is something that I'm, I'm glad that we unanimously support, giving families the opportunity to choose where to educate their children, and not depending on just one avenue. So I think it's great that our county supports that. Also, you've seen a number of things in the news pertaining to the Second Amendment. Rockingham County will discuss the Second Amendment at the February 3rd meeting, and I think Mabel has put out a press release notifying folks of, of that discussion, so certainly encourage those that are interested to attend February the 3rd. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I appreciate everyone in attendance tonight. I'd like to recognize elected officials, Sheriff Sam Page, has been here this evening, we appreciate him being here, and some of his staff. We appreciate members of the Board of Elections, Bonnie Perkins and Tony Race are here tonight. We appreciate you folks, and again, as Commissioner Berger mentioned, we're taking up these issues on February 3rd with regards to the Second Amendment, so we would encourage you to be involved, tune in or come and attend. We appreciate your attendance again, thank you.
Thank you. You heard some public comment, and we always welcome public comment, I might mention that one of the comments regarding personnel in our elections office is per view of the Board of Elections and not the Board of Commissioners. However, we try to be responsive to needs and requirements thereof. I want to piggyback on Commissioner Berger about the resolution and support of school choice. We in this county are actually very fortunate. Now, I know some folks complain about the school system and think that, that's good, you know, we, we need to fix problems and move on, but we do have, and I get to see them throughout the states, and some of my other, this state and my capacities, we have a good school system here, we also have a good charter school as part of our public system, we have a variety of church schools, and private school is a part of the overall system, and I think the public should have a chance to use those if they want. And we have a commended early college system that's out there, and I'm all for giving parents as much choice as possible about this, because even with, within my own home, the kids are different. No shoe fits everybody in the crowd, so I think this resolution was very important to put out there. Right, weather's turning cold, watch out for the elderly folks. I have had a couple of emails not about zoning, but about litter, so I always want to make a pitch, "Mr. Travis forgot." Pitch not to litter the, the roads and byways of Rockingham County. Gentlemen, are there further comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, I would recognize a motion to adjourn.
I'll make this.
You're right, we're gonna recess until Saturday morning, Friday.
Friday morning.
You can hear by yourself. Let me know Saturday work.
Where's Pat Galloway? I was here last Saturday, she can vouch for it. Friday, early.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock in the morning. All right, this board sends recess with the approval of the board until eight o'clock.
So move.
Move.
Someone's got a second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.
Yes, sir.